As part of the agenda, please limit your comments to three minutes. Public comment cards are conveniently placed in the meeting room entrance and should be submitted prior to the meeting to Deputy Clerk who sits to my left, your right, Ms. Ashley. So, is there anybody I don't have any comment cards this morning? Is there anybody that would like to speak on public, on agenda items, on public comment? Seeing none, I will close the public comment on agenda items and move to the consent agenda. Is there anybody that would like to remove anything from the consent agenda, Commissioner Adams Act?
F.
F, like box truck.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey?
I have none, sir.
Mr. Pickens?
I have none.
Mr. Wilkinson?
I have none.
And I have none.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like for you to entertain, the board entertain, the motion to accept items A, B, C, D, E, G, H, I, and J.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda minus item F. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Adams Act, item F.
So I pulled item F just to acknowledge the fact that for all intents and purposes, the staff and the union have done a great job of working together to achieve their goals as far as what was laid out by the president as well as our staff. And that's what our executive meeting was earlier, was to discuss this. I think it's a good agreement. I think there's always places we do better, but for where we are compared to where we were two, three years ago, I think it's a step in the right direction. I just want to say I appreciate everybody who was involved in that negotiation. Thank you.
Is that a motion to approve, sir?
Second.
We have a motion approving on item F. And seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. We're going to move on to item seven, new business. Item A is the Public Works proposed MSBU discussion. I believe that was requested to be on the agenda by Commissioner Harvey.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and thank you. And if you don't mind, this item will be pulled off there. Came to find out that during the research that the roads were owned by the county but not taken into the county maintenance system. So this, this discussion needs to go all the way back to the beginning and be cleaned up and ready for.
You're requesting it just be pulled from the agenda.
Yes, sir.
A, reach, that's just pulling, right? A, item A is pulled from the agenda. Item B, Public Works vacation of the ten foot drainage easement at Himalayan in Interlochen. Resolution is attached. Who's taking that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We got a request from the resident that lives on Himalayan Street at 519 requesting a vacation of a drainage easement that we do not currently use. We have no future use for the drainage easement. What we found out is that the portion of the mobile home that is existing there lies within side of the easement. Public Works has no futuristic need for the easement, so that we were concurrent to go ahead and vacate that easement.
So the land's actually owned by them, it just has an easement drainage easement across it?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay. Any questions? Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the drainage easement resolution.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. We'll move into item eight, code enforcement. Thomas, could you please come forward?
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, Mr. Hall contacted me this morning. He's running a few minutes late, he wasn't feeling well. Could you move him down to the bottom of that? And I'm going to start with B, if you don't mind, it's not a problem.
Okay, Thomas, did you catch that? We're going to move item A.
Yes, sir.
Down to last.
To the last, okay.
Yes. And we'll start with item B, which is case number 2005-1325.
Yes, sir. Address is 112 Orient Street. The property owner's name, that was a typo, the property owner's name is 112 Orient Street Interlochen Land Trust. The violation was unsafe structure. The original fine amount was thirteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty cents. The total cost of enforcement action was three thousand thirty-eight dollars. Property owner's recently purchased the property, is now compliant, and requesting a fine reduction. Property owners recently purchased the property, is now compliant, and requesting a fine reduction. If the board approves, we recommend the reduced fine to be paid within ninety days.
Is there anybody present today that would like to speak in favor or against item B? Seeing none, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the actual hard cost of three thousand thirty-eight dollars is paid within ninety days.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, multiple seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Item C, which is nineteen one seventy-two.
Address is 116 Horst Landing Road. Property owner's name is William Harast and Diane McNulty. The violation was care premises. Original fine amount was twenty-four thousand thirty-seven dollars. Total cost of enforcement action is one thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars. The property is now compliant, and the owner's requesting the fine reduction. If the board approves, we recommend the reduced fine to be paid within ninety days.
Is there anybody here this morning that would like to speak in favor of or against this case? Seeing none, all, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of eighteen fifty-four, the amount is paid within ninety days on code case two thousand nineteen dash zero zero one seventy-two.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Item D, which is case twenty-two twenty-eight ninety-seven.
Address is 114 Horst Landing Road. Property owner's name is William Harast and Diane McNulty. Violation was living in an RV and care premises. Original fine amount was five thousand thirty-seven dollars. The total cost of enforcement action is one thousand two hundred dollars. The property is now compliant, and the owner's requesting a fine reduction. If the board approves, we recommend the reduced fine to be paid within ninety days.
Anybody present today that would like to speak for or against this case? Seeing none, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of code case number twenty-two dash zero zero two eight ninety-seven, amount of twelve hundred dollars is paid within ninety days.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Next is item E, which is twenty sixteen one oh three.
Address is three one four North Edgeline Road. Property owner's name is Joseph Larikay. Violation was unsafe structure and care premises. The original fine amount was fifty-six thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars. Total cost of enforcement action was two thousand forty-six dollars. The property owner's recently purchased the property, is now compliant, and requesting a fine reduction. If the board approves, we recommend the reduced fine to be paid within ninety days.
Is there anybody present that would like to speak for or against this case? Seeing none, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, on code case two thousand sixteen dash zero zero one zero three, recommend two thousand forty-six dollars is paid within ninety days.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Sure.
So I just want to disclose that I'm friends with Mr. Wood as well as his representation that's here today, but it will not affect my vote in this matter.
Okay, thank you.
And I have the same.
He reached out to me also, I'd only got to talk to him for a minute as he was busy and I wasn't able to get back with him at a time that he could take the call, so. Item F.
Code case twenty fifteen fourteen, address is one oh two Riverside Lane, Palaca. Property owner's name is Tyler Wood. Violation was unsafe structure and care premises. The original fine amount was twenty-four thousand six hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Total cost of enforcement action is two thousand one hundred and eighty-four dollars. The property owner's recently purchased the property, is now compliant, and requesting a fine reduction. If the board approves, we recommend the reduced fine to be paid within ninety days.
Thank you, is there anybody present today, please come forward? Try to hold your comments to three minutes if possible, sir.
Okay. I'm, my name's Michael Craver, live in Palaca. Tyler Wood bought this property at the end of October, and when he bought the property, there were existing code liens on it, but he was not notified of it when the deed was recorded. The deed was recorded with code liens on it, and the previous property owner has other property in county, and so how the fines can transfer from the owner that has property in Putnam County to a new purchaser is, it amazes me. The people that live next to the property have completely trashed their property as well as trash all over the backside of Mr. Wood's property, and Mr. Wood has went to great expense to get trees that had been illegally dumped on his property out. We cleaned up a lot of the stuff, and the people next to his property, as of this morning, I was notified by the neighbor that they're still dumping trash on the property that's beside his. There's an abatement foreclosure notice on the property beside his, but I've been informed that the abatement will not include Mr. Wood's property. So Mr. Wood is now also gonna be responsible for cleaning up the trash that we've already cleaned up, plus the trash that the neighbors have dumped on his property. He's, he lives in Kentucky, he's available by speakerphone, if anybody needs to speak with him, I can call him and he'll answer immediately. But in reality, as soon as he recorded the deed, he instantly started receiving bills for these claims. The existing, the previous property on him lives in this county and was notified by hand-delivered letter that the property was going to be sold for tax, tax liens. Mr. Wood bought the property, paid off the existing tax liens of over seventy-five hundred dollars on the day that he purchased the property, so he's in good faith, making efforts to be a good member of the Putnam County community. He plans to use this as a vacation area, he wants to improve the property even more, and from knowing him, and he's a very upstanding person, so for him to be stuck with, you know, even the reduced amount of two thousand one hundred and eighty-four dollars is just like adding insult to injury to a brand-new property owner in Putnam County. I could say Mr. Wood's available, if anybody would like to ask him any questions specifically, and other than that, I really don't have a whole lot to say. If somebody has questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Anybody have any questions at this time? Thank you for coming.
But, I mean, our request is, is through the extent of the expense that has already been made to clean up this existingness that he had no part of, which wasn't transferred to the owners of more property in Putnam County, that he not be held liable fully for these fines. So thank you very much.
Thank you for coming today. The board have anybody else that would like to speak in favor or against this case? Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on this one, understanding the fact that I think Mr. did get kind of caught in between a rock and a hard place. We, the board is trying to recoup the fees of the citizens of the county, but I think in this case, we could reduce that by the monthly administrative costs, and I would like to make a recommendation that we set fourteen fifty-four, is paid within ninety days.
Do we have a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Okay, I just want to say one thing before we move to the next case. I understand the position that Mr. Wood was in, I truly, this is not unusual. If you think about it, just about half the cases that come before us for fine reductions were cases that had previous code liens on it that the owner either didn't do his due diligence and find out about the lien, or bought it knowing that there was a lien and cleaned it up and then came back, and because they cleaned it up, they don't think they should have to pay a fine at all. So, you know, I just wanted to let the board know that, and Mr. Tyler, you can tell Mr. Tyler that that's part of the deal, is that, you know, this is the first time this has come before, it's almost the exact same thing, it's almost every, every meeting. So, thank you, and we'll move on to case number nineteen dash zero zero six eight three.
Address is one five five Fay Street. Property owner's name is Veronica Avery. Violation was unsafe structure and care premises. The original fine amount was twenty-two thousand eight hundred, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars. The total cost of enforcement action is one thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars. Property owner's recently purchased the property, property is now compliant, and requesting a fine reduction. If the board approves, we recommend the reduced fine to be paid within ninety days.
Are we on a different case, Thomas, because?
Case number is twenty nineteen zero zero six eight three.
So there's no backup for item G and I'm like?
Thomas, what was the, on the case number twenty nineteen six eighty-three?
Yes, sir.
What was the red staff recommended amount?
One thousand seven hundred eighty-four dollars.
One thousand seven eighty-four?
Yes.
Do you have paperwork on that? Could we take a three-minute recess and make those copies, and we want to see this paperwork before we hear this case, please? And we're gonna take a three-minute recess. Time, and now that we have the right paperwork on this particular agenda item, does the commission need any further time to review, or can I have Thomas move into this? Thomas, if you'll go ahead and start over with this case now that we have the corrected paperwork.
Case number's twenty nineteen zero zero six eight three, address is one five five Fay Street. Property owner's name is Veronica Avery. Original fine amount was twenty-two thousand two hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Total cost of enforcement action is one thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars. Property owner's recently purchased the property, is now compliant, and requesting a fine reduction. If the board approves, we recommend the reduced fine to be paid within ninety days.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody here this morning that would like to speak in favor, please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please?
Mark, my name's Dave Hicks, I'm not a new owner, I've been on the deed the entire time, and for whatever reason, the paperwork keeps getting sent to Ohio to my aunt that wants no part of this property. It's an estate property from my grandfather. If you dig far enough down on the Owls and there, I'm on there, I'm not a new owner, but they keep sending any notice of anything about this property to Ohio. I've asked the clerk's office repeatedly to send it to me, I have a home in LaBelle south of here, I'm gonna take residence of this one, though they've brought it up to code and nobody else wants to do anything about it. Just ask a little bit leniently on the fine, because they keep sending it to my aunt in Ohio, that's washed her hands of the property. I have no idea why, I've been paying the taxes for the last five years on it, and every year I ask them, would you please send me the tax bill, and they keep not sending it, they keep sending it to Ohio where it's being ignored. And every year I ask them, would you please send me the tax bill? And they keep not sending it. They keep sending it to Ohio where it's being ignored. Um, but extensive repairs in the property, a huge pile of storm debris out front. I'm still gonna have to pay it all off. Uh, remediated all the issues and I've got flooring going in today. Appliances were delivered yesterday. I plan on taking residence and being a productive taxpayer. Just asking you to give me as big a break as you can. I have spent a truckload of money fixing this.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Appreciate you coming this morning. Anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, on case number two thousand nineteen dash zero zero six eighty-three, um, the recommendation, staff recommendation is seventeen eighty-four. Pay within ninety days.
We have a motion on the second. Other discussion, Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to mention that I b- I believe on, uh, in those instances, you need to get with the property appraiser's office and have the mailing address changed on the parcel to... Okay, alright. Yes, sir.
Mr. Hicks, if you're gonna speak, the meeting is recorded, so I need if you're gonna have to step back up here, uh, not a problem.
The reason the deed's like that, it was like, again, it was, um, an inheritance. It went to children, my mother, her brother, and two aunts. And my mother's passed, one of the aunts has passed. It keeps splitting out. And the paperwork just keeps going wherever it is. I don't know why they're starting with Veronica Avery. I've met the woman once in my life. She's never been here. I phoned her. She wants no part of the property, doesn't want to spend a dime on it. I'm trying to keep it in the family, uh, gone to great expense to do that. And again, I've been to the property appraiser's office. Every time I look at the tax collector's office, I make the same request. Hey, can you just send me the tax bill? You know, when I leave here, that's where I'm going to go pay this year's taxes. Because they still haven't sent me the bill also the paperwork for the, what it was finally agreed to. Could you please send it to one fifty-five address in the number? I've never met her.
Uh, y'all, y'all wait a minute, excuse me. Y'all need to, y'all need to address this conversation to me. If you want to have a sidebar after the meeting, I'm sure Thomas would be happy to have one with you. But I'm sure that there's something, Mr. Hicks, on here about who's the owner of record. And I don't know that you can just go down and get it owner of record changed because you say...
Oh, I'm not asking the owner of record to be changed. I just want me to... I'm entitled to a copy of the bills, but they keep sending them to Ohio.
I understand that, sir. I'm just saying that's not what's before us this morning, but I understand the frustration you must be feeling. I just don't know that you can just go down and just say about sending me the bills from now on, I'm gonna pay them instead of my aunt or whoever.
And I have a ten o'clock appointment with an attorney to start chasing the paperwork legally.
Yes, sir.
I have a real estate attorney at ten o'clock that I'm meeting with.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Hicks. You done that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Um, we have a motion on the floor. Yes, Commissioner Harvey?
Mr. Moore, real quick, I see Mr. Hicks has his checkbook in his pocket, and I appreciate that. Um, if he pays this off though, today, we, we all vote on it to go away. He's still not the legal owner of the property yet, correct? So he's just gonna pay a lien?
Not don't regret it, Mr. Har-
Whoever is the owner of record, the lien will be released in their, yes, yes. It is at all.
Somewhere down the line. That's, yeah, that's, okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Har-
Do we have a motion on the floor? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you for coming, Mr. Hicks. So that we're gonna go to, uh, item H, uh, twenty twenty-one zero one sixty.
Address is one ten Lincoln Street. The property owner's name is Catherine Yodis. Violation is care premises. The original fine amount is eleven thousand forty-three dollars and fifty cents. Total cost of enforcement action is one thousand five hundred thirty dollars. Property owners recently purchased the property. It's now compliant and requesting a fine reduction. If the board approves, we recommend the reduced fine to be paid within ninety days.
Anybody in attendance today that would like to speak for or against this case, please come forward. If you would state your name and address, record, please.
Sean Adici. Do you want the address of the problem or right of?
Pardon me?
Which address, this address?
Mailing address.
My mailing address is nineteen eighty Old Time Avenue, St. Augustine, uh, three two zero eight four. Uh, this property we bought, we knew it had some cleanup to do on it. Uh, we didn't know how much it was because we weren't able to walk it because it was so bad. Um, we did look and tried to find to see if there was any liens. We couldn't find any. We went out there to clean up and then found a notice, um, that was just put out there the day before. Um, this property had someone dumping tires on it for quite some time. Turned out to be about twelve thousand pounds worth of tires that I had to take for the dump. Um, it took quite a bit of work, quite a bit of money and labor, uh, and materials to do that. We are just asking for a reduction and the reduction or a waiver. Um, if we can do that, we could clean it immediately. Um, that's it.
You realize that every single one of these that come before us is almost the exact same thing being said over and over again. We bought the property. It was dirty. We cleaned it up. We should get more than just the regular fine reduction because we cleaned it up. You know, I'm...
We tried to find the liens and, you know, we couldn't find any liens listed online. I'm gonna want to talk to Mr. Moore. He said just to call them next time we buy a property, it'd be easier to find it, but...
Yeah, you have to do a municipal lien search is the terminology.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
I didn't, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Moore, in that, in that manner, had he, had he done the municipal lien search, would he have found it? Or do we have filed that lien yet? Um, he would have found it. Okay. Alright, thank you.
Any further question? Okay, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we set fifteen hundred and thirty dollars if paid within ninety days.
We have a motion. Then a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Okay, and, uh, we're gonna move back up to item eight, uh, code case number twenty oh four one t-
Address is three oh nine K nine street. Property owner's name is Francis Hall and Janice. Um, housewife, life estate. Violation is care premises and business in a residential. The original fine amount was sixty thousand seven hundred thirteen dollars. Total cost of enforcement action was two thousand five hundred four dollars. Property owners, property owners purchased the property. It is now compliant and requesting a fine reduction. If the board approves, we recommend the reduced fine to be paid within ninety days.
Thank you. Is there anybody in attendance this morning would like to speak in favor or against this case? Mr. Hall? If Mr. Hall doesn't want to, I mean, I'm not gonna force him to do it. Okay.
Good morning.
Morning.
Two thousand and eight, I purchased the property to clean up a mess in our neighborhood. When I accomplished that, I went to John Salmon, who I'd known for years. And I said, look, all I want to do is polish the house, clean up all the rubbish and car parts and stuff. And I said, all I want to do with the property is to mow. And told me if you buy a demolition permit and do what you said you'd do, he said, we'll reduce, uh, forgive the fines. Uh, I did that. Uh, I, I went back to John. He had visited the property and incidented. And he told me at that point in time that all the fines had been forgiven. Fast forward to today, I have a fire for the property. And I got a call from the title company that, uh, that there was a lien against the property. I mean, that they had told me about that at the time. I gotta tell you, it just didn't register, I guess, because I had the means at that time and the, I should have and could have paid it off. So I just, I'm, I'm here today to, uh, to ask you if you can, if you can lower the fines on the property.
Thank you, sir. You know, the staff recommendation, I don't know if you've been told, was to lower it from sixty thousand dollars down to two thousand five hundred and four. And, uh, by the way, I don't think Mr. Salmon's had the authority to waive any fines when he was a code enforcement officer. So, you know, I'm sorry that you were told that. So anyhow, that's what their, that's what the staff recommendation is, is to reduce the fine from sixty thousand seven hundred and thirteen down to two thousand five hundred and four. Yes, sir. Thank you for coming today. Commissioner Adams, Zach?
When, when did you bring it into compliance?
He can't hear you well. Mr. Hall, the question was asked, when did you bring it into compliance? Or Thomas, when, when was it brought into compliance?
It, well, the pro- the property was abated by us. It was brought in compliance by us. Um, and I guess when he, when it was in compliance, and then when he purchased it, somebody had already illegally dumped more stuff on it before there's... And then he had to clean that up too. So, um...
When did the abatement happen?
Twenty eighth, uh, two thousand eight.
But that didn't make it in compliance is what Thomas was saying because of that.
We, we abated it. We cleaned it up. We paid a contractor. It was compliant. Okay?
Then it got the...
But then the owner was, they were supposed to request a fine reduction, which they were told that in the notes, which they never did. Then he sold it, then he bought it. But when he bought it, somebody already threw more garbage and stuff on the property, which he had to clean up. Um, and a lien search was, a lien search was never done when he, when he did his closing. The liens were recorded and they would have been seen. So there was liens on it when he bought it.
Thank you. Any further questions? Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm very, uh, this case concerns me. I know Fran Hall personally. I'm, him and I cleaned up many places together out in Locken Lake Estates. I think to answer the question, it was two thousand and eight that it was cleaned up. So I make a motion that, I make a motion that county accepts a thousand seventy-six dollars for the abatement cost. And be done with this, this pay within ninety days.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Chair will entertain another motion.
I, I'd, I'd make a motion that we take off the administrative monthly of four sixty. Um, similar to what we did in the other one, which would be two thousand and forty-four dollars, forty-six dollars.
Do we have a motion for two, two thousand forty-six dollars in a second?
Not taken.
Do we have a motion on a second? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Um, you have the amount. Two, what was it? Two thousand forty-six? Two thousand forty-six dollars to be paid within ninety days.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, that's the end of our code enforcement section. Item eight, uh, we're gonna move into appointments. Um, Commissioner Adams, Zach? Commissioner Harvey?
I have none that are listed here, but I would like to go ahead and our West Putnam MSBU. Um, as we found out that the commissioners appoint every year, I'd like to appoint Richard Atkins, Andre Reynolds, George Whitehill, Brian Kelly, Ralph Hagie, and Chris Moly to the West Putnam MSBU.
Is that a nomination or is that a, uh, an appointment? They're all the districts?
Can we repeat the names again so we can answer?
Richard Atkins, Andre Reynolds, George Whitehill, Brian Kelly, Ralph Hagie, Chris Malloy, M O L L O Y. Thank you, sir.
Okay, and those are district. So if MSBU falls near district, it's a district appointment. Just make it your work. Thank you. No problem, no problem. Okay, so, uh, Commissioner Pickens, do you have any appointments for us today?
I have none.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
I have none.
And I have none. Uh, next, we're gonna move to a public comment on miscellaneous items. This portion of the board is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board. It is not reasonable to expect that the board will engage in debate or deliberation about the matter that has received no prior information as part of the agenda. Please limit your time to three minutes. Public comments cards are conveniently placed in the meeting room entrance and should be submitted prior to the meeting to the deputy clerk who sits at my left, your right, Ashley. Um, and, uh, I have Nat Gil. Come on, Nat, you got what you wanted.
He's on the roll.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know.
I'll make it real fast. Nat Gil, uh, one oh five City Oak Lane. Um, I speak for the union. I'm the president of local thirty-five twenty-nine. And I wanted to give an update. Last time I spoke up here, I was imploring the county and all of y'all to get involved with the large fundraiser we were doing. And, uh, that fundraiser went off spectacularly. So we raised a large sum of money for this family. The outpouring from the community, um, from management, from commission, from my chief. I mean, e- everyone that wanted to get involved got involved and it was phenomenal. Um, so just a heartfelt thank you for us. Um, thank you from the family. I've had the privilege to go out and meet them at their house and inform them just what an amazing accomplishment this was. Um, real quick side note, I was reading in my Bible this morning, Matthew six, there's a scripture about, uh, when you, when your right hand does something, don't let your left hand know what it is because, uh, what's done in secret, the Lord will reward you for it, right? So the, the next part of this is, is hard for me because it's someone that I very much care about, someone I'm very proud to be associated with. But a, a local contractor went with me to meet the family. And, um, he got together with a, a Putnam County contractor co-op, all of his friends and comrades and colleagues, they got together. And we've been able to, with him leading it and leading the charge of doing this, we're gonna be able to build, uh, an entire addition for this young man to be able to come home. Into, it's gonna be a clean sanitary space for him. It'll be his own, um, you know, ADA shower. It'll, it'll be set up for the needs that are gonna be specific for him. There is plans, uh, after talking with the family of Oakland, to have this young man home within a calendar year after, uh, the event from the hospital. So he's got a long road ahead of him, but, uh, a good group of local contractors from our county, men and women that care about the citizens and the people. They, they wish not to have their names out there, which I understand. Um, so what's done in secret, the Lord will reward them for, and I, I wholeheartedly believe that. So just another step, as I said earlier, one person can do one thing, but that one thing might empower others to be able to step in and do that. And so I encourage everyone listening to this, everyone on the board, everyone in attendance, if you can do one thing for somebody, it might be the very thing that sparks off something phenomenal. I mean, we're getting, we raised a large sum of money, which I didn't believe that we would be able to raise that much. In the end, we're able to do this very costly addition for this family that, that needs it, which I never would have imagined of being able to do that. It's just been one little step has led to multiple people and agencies and, and, uh, demographics being able to get involved in this. So very grateful, um, very thankful for y'all's participation, uh, definitely. Anyone that gave their time and energy and resources to make this happen, it's, it's much appreciated by us. So that's all I have. Thank you so much for your time.
Nat, I think the, the big kudos here goes to you and your crew. I mean, Commissioner Harvey, I think Commissioner Pickens said it one time so adequately well that when you cook with Commissioner Harvey, you just show up and take the glory. He's already done all the work and got everything ready. You show up, he hands you a set of tongs, you do the job, you get done, you go home. And he cleans everything up or has help or brings help with him. So between him cooking and all your firefighters and all the people that were there that day doing that job, y'all deserve all the credit here. That was a big deal. I was just glad to be a very small part of the thing. Um, like I said, a very small part of what you and your crew did, so...
Well, I appreciate that, but, yeah.
You need a, you need a good solid slap on the back yourself, my friend.
We got plenty of those, so thank you much for your time. I greatly appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Okay, um...
Mr. Chairman, may I say?
Sure.
It was a delight to work with everybody that we did and, and I learned that day that Julianne can take chicken wings off of a rack, off of a smoker faster than anybody I've ever seen. If y'all watched it, the girl is phenomenal.
Watched it. She scared me. I was holding one side of the rack and she could get them down and move on.
She is a woman of action.
Okay, thank you. Uh, with, is there anybody else that would like to speak on our public comment this morning? Okay, uh, we're gonna move on to the clerk of court, Mr. Honorable Matt Reynolds.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Um, just wanted to, um, to update the board on a couple things. Um, the audit, um, will be a couple- Um, the audit, um, will be a couple weeks later, uh, than normal this year. As you know, Mrs. Frank, uh, left as, as finance director, so Ryan has done a, a wonderful job with that. But we expect the, uh, annual comprehensive financial report to be finished by the end of April. Normally it's done by the end of March. Um, but just wanted to let y'all know that. And also, um, I'll be bringing back an updated draft investment policy at, um, either the next meeting or the second meeting in March, hopefully at the next meeting, um, to have the board take a look at in order to, um, allow me to, um, really, uh, well, it'll allow me to perform the normal investment, um, uh, management services, uh, that I'm charged with doing in, in statutes. But also, um, it will update the county's investment, uh, portfolio as well into the things that we can invest in. And it'll modernize that policy, um, get us on, on par with, um, counties like, I think, Don, Marion, the other ones around us. So, um, be looking forward to that. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Now, when we discuss this on the phone, I just wanna bring that as soon as you get the new investment, uh, policy from your investment advisor, if you can send it out to the board, even if it's previous to the next agenda where we can start reviewing it a little bit, uh, longer and then we'll.
Yes, sir.
Place it on the next, if you're ready, we'll place it on the next, uh, meeting under new business.
Alright. Yes, sir, I will do.
Thank you, Matt. Uh, we're going to move to our county attorney, Mr. Commando. Thank you. Um, Commissioner, or Commissioner, I think she is Commissioner. Uh, Administrator Suggs.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just a couple of things. Uh, thank you, uh, to the staff at work, uh, alongside, uh, myself, Mr. Commando and Mr. Gil and his team for, uh, for putting together what I think is a, a wonderful union agreement for the next three years. You guys did a great job working with us and thank you very much for that. And so, uh, the only other comment I have, Mr. Chairman, is I want to take this opportunity personally to say happy birthday to Miss Young who, uh, who amongst all other things in her extraordinary, uh, day-to-day, uh, duties finds time to make good things happen.
So, you didn't serenade her like we did.
No, sir. Like I told you earlier, uh, uh, some of us are scared of her. And, uh, but in all seriousness, uh, uh, very blessed and very fortunate to have Miss Young on our team and happy birthday to her.
Okay, uh, we're gonna start on Commissioner comments. Start with Commissioner Adamsak. Uh, Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple. Um, one of our great leaders in the county, Mr. Don Hansford, passed away last week. And just a real great man, a Marine and, uh, just a, a man of his word, a man of his handshake. You'd have to know where he's, he stood where he said he was gonna stand and, uh, just sad to see our community lose such a great man. Um, every now and then in our county life, we do something, I think, right. Uh, we take heat for it, but I'm gonna bring up last night, returning from Grandin Lake Shores, coming down three fifteen, headed south, got to the S curve and, uh, there was a bad accident there. So, the whole S curve was completely shut down. And, um, there's only a couple ways to get around and you gotta pretty much know. But years ago, we did some paving out there and we partnered with, we actually didn't partner, we hooked up to what the city, the town of Interlocking did. And we were able to move traffic down by the ball field, back out Manners Lake Road and come back around. And we said then, if we ever needed to divert traffic because of that wreck being in that curve, we could do it. And sure enough, last night that happened. Uh, so we were able to do that. And I just wanna say, you know, those, those things are important. The community doesn't know all the reasons why we choose some of the areas we choose to do the work in. But there is a plan, there is a long-term vision. And, um, I'm just very grateful that the board decided back then to do that because it really helped alleviate a, a major problem. Because had that ha- not happened, it would have just been a nightmare to move people around last night. So, just wanna say that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Commissioner Pickens?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Turner. Uh, just also want to, uh, commend our staff, uh, J R and then the, the firefighters' union for coming together with this contract. Um, uh, it looks like we're moving forward and, uh, hopefully everybody will be happy that, with this and, and make the next contract next year maybe a little easier to, um, to keep supporting, uh, such a vital part of our, our community. Um, and I just appreciate everybody's work because it wasn't that easy just a few years ago. Um, I'd like to, uh, commend the concerned citizens of South Putnam. They held their first annual soul food festival in Eagle Lions Park Saturday, um, last Saturday from eleven to seven. Um, they had a number of different organizations, uh, preparing food and also five or six food trucks and another ten or twelve vendors. Uh, but they had music and, and different activities and really, really well attended by the community in conjunction with the annual farmer's market that the city of Crescent City does. So, they really blended well together. And I just wanted to con- commend them, uh, for what they do in South Putnam. They're raising money. Um, this time to try to renovate the old, uh, African-American Masonic Lodge in Crescent City. So, this will move that forward. So, I just wanna consent, commend them, uh, representatives. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Pickens. Commissioner Wilkinson?
Thank you. Um, I wanted to also commend the union and, uh, J R and his staff and everyone for working on the, uh, local, uh, union agreement. A good job by everyone for sure, uh, with the ninety-two and a half percent. I did the math, uh, in agreement on the union side. So, that's very, um, very commendable. And then I wanted to discuss just a little bit about the trash. I know everything that we discussed today, um, regarding code enforcement was trash. And it's, I, you know, right around the county and I see it all the time. I mean, I've literally watched people throw stuff out of their window and right in front of me. And it's, and I don't know how we, how we create that change in our community. But it's something that I would like to see happen. And if there's something we can do as a county commission, um, I'm open for suggestions from citizens. Uh, I know that Keep Putnam Beautiful does a wonderful job. Nicole Grace is always out in the community and she helps at boat ramps and just all over the community. And I know there's annual and different types of, uh, trash pickups. I've certainly participated in some of those over the years. I don't know if we, you know, just get in the forefront and each one of us work one in our own area to show that we really are, uh, wanna see our county cleaned up. But it's something that, that we have a challenge with in this community and I'd like to see it changed. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, uh, if you don't mind, I apologize for interrupting, but I asked Mr. Tilton to like to share on, on that, you know, in that segue there, we've got time. If you'd like to share anything, Mr. Pickens saw the list again and how that might benefit our family.
Fine with me, yeah. I think it's a bigger issue than what we're gonna settle this afternoon. There's a lot of roads are a whole lot worse than a lot of others. And some of them are state roads that we have no part of going and picking the trash up on. So, I think there's a lot more issues here than we're just having trash. It's, you know, different, different scenarios for different areas. So, I'm with, with Commissioner Wilkinson. I'm ready to pick it all up too, but we can't go take, pick all the state roads up and put any, that's up to DOT. They're supposed to do it before they mow or whatever. So, but I'm on board with you. I am. Uh, Mr. Tilton, would you have anything you'd like to add?
The only thing I would like to add is that we, uh, this year, we have scheduled three tire amnesty days, um, coming up. Our first one will be actually this Saturday, um, which, uh, will be, I believe, from nine to three. And so we will open it up. Everybody, every citizen that comes in will be able to bring twenty tires at no charge that we will then take and process and put up. Um, but this will be the first of three of those that we'll have between now and the first of June. So, we are trying to do from that standpoint a couple things to, uh, you know, to help clean up. But it's a systemic problem in, in, in Putnam County. Um, I've had guys on the side of the road picking stuff and people throw it out there in front of them because they're on the side of the road picking it up. I've also told law enforcement, pull them over. See the trucks leaving the landfill, pull them over. Um, and we've told them, that we've told them that. So, uh, any suggestions or any help when it comes to that matter, but it's a systemic problem we have throughout the.
Thank you. And I've seen that in the newspaper. I'm sorry that. I've seen that advertised in the newspaper as well for the, um, tire pickup. So, I appreciate that effort.
We'll also be having a household hazardous waste, uh, amnesty day as well, where we partner with Alachua County and they'll be coming over and setting up their different drums and things to take all the, any chemicals, paints. Um, we already take those, but kind of just make an event out of it and we'll be able to get rid of them in, in that day that we set up. And, uh, it was a success last year and we hope to see it just grow from this year.
All the buttons lit up, you still have, you still have the floor evidently or want to call about something. I think you're still have the floor, Mr..
Can we make sure that that goes on the county's website, those, uh, tire disposal, uh, days? And does anybody, we're, you know, we obviously need to get that message out. I know we're doing that in the newspaper, but also any way we can get that out.
On social media too.
Social media. Alright, thank you.
Mr. Harvey?
Thank you. That's only gonna be at the central landfill.
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct.
Commissioner Pickens?
That was my question.
Okay.
That's all, that's all I have, sir. Thank you.
You have, okay. Under my commissioner comments, um, I would like to, uh, join everybody else and would be remiss if I didn't thank the staff and union like everybody else did. Um, also, I'm going to set a meeting for March seventh at five oh five, Tuesday, March seventh, which is a week from today, I believe. And we, we got, have a five oh five in the afternoon budget meeting. So, we're gonna set it for Tuesday, the seventh at five oh five. Um, I also would like to, uh, meant to talk to Julianne about this this morning, but Commissioner Harvey had her over to the side where I couldn't talk. But, um, so sorry for this and not, we need to put a little more effort in our boat ramps. Um, I'm, I've had more than one person reach out to me about this and some of them are quite upset that we're not keeping the trash picked up as well as they think we should. And some of the trees and some of them need to be trimmed back in some areas. And just, if, if we could maybe, as they go out and look at these, if we could have them look at this a, a little closer for not just the normal pickup, empty a trash can, but actually things that need to be done to maintain these ramps in a little better condition. I realize that a few years ago that we stopped using the fishing fund money to do this maintenance, but we also allocated money to, uh, parks and rec to be able to pay for these expenses on top of them. If it's a money issue, then somebody needs to bring that to the board if that's what the issue truly is. Um, we have a lot of citizens that use these boat ramps and we need to make sure that they get the same love that everybody else gets on their project, whether it be pickleball or whether it be whatever. The boat ramps also need a little love and attention too, from what I'm being told by multiple, uh, residents. So, if we could, uh, look into that, I'd appreciate it and maybe do a little tree trimming and cleaning up or whatever. Um, the, um, Mr. Ho Telling, I guess, I, I saw you turned in a, wait a minute, sir. The, the public, the public access is over with at this time. Um, and if I allow, huh? Sir? On the boat ramp? Okay. What? If I allow you to come up anytime during whatever meeting you wanna come at, then I've got to allow everybody in the future. We, we had a public comment earlier. Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Um, is there anything else to come before the meeting today? Hearing none, this meeting is hereby adjourned.